Hi, everybody. I'm Brooke Sanders, and this is Johnstown's Finest.
I order the special media of City Council Wednesday, 28/28/2025. Please rise for the invocation.
Let us pray. All wise and discerning, what have we asked of God? We thank you for the privilege and opportunity to be gathered here one more time. God, we just pray that you would be with us in everything that you do and everything that you say. We pray only that what you do, Father, would just glorify it, should be blessed as our people. And we ask that you would bring us all together on bond for Christ's sake.
Amen.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sarah, when you've settled in, roll call, please.
President.
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 We will be moving into public comment on agenda items only, and also after the resolution, we'll be doing presentations by CJL and also WSP. So at this time, if you would, John D. Bartola, please. If you would, your name, address, and of course, speaking to the resolution.
My name is John D. Bartola, 1197 Bedford Street.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Then we have five minutes to speak, sir.
I see the time. Thank you. I want to talk about the biggest issue on the agenda, the only issue, Central Park. Community is very important to all of us. That's why you see there's a large room full of people here. And I've been debating what I'm going to say to you. I want to thank Councilwoman Mule. I actually saw at the start of the park petition, when I took particular interest in were your emails from SCAPE. You and I are diametrically opposed on our views, but those emails were very telling. I want to thank Councilwoman Mock and Councilperson Clark. I went to Clark's meeting last night to talk about the Central Park issue. There was a lot of information. I'm horrified. I'm horrified to hear the plan for the Christmas trees to move into the Cambria County Library on Main Street. I am completely shocked. Marie, you told me that. You said R spoke to the Cambria County Library. They're going to put that. I even spoke to some of the Discover people over there. I can't believe you would consider closing a part of Main Street when our businesses are hurting so poorly. Becky Bushgo on Facebook calls this the concrete jungle because there's such a large percentage of concrete in these new plans. These new plans, which you paid $1.6 million for, you're not using, you don't own, you've reported you only have 75% completion rate, and we're at a point now where $1.6 million, you spent $8,000 allegedly on the new plans with CJL, that's the number I was told last night at the meeting. I'm looking at some of this, what such mismanagement is, a complete utter abject disgrace. There is no nice way of putting it. You had four years to pass these plans, and with a consensus of seven people and one who's brand new, you could not reach a consensus. That's what the community's seeing. People are online angry that they're losing their Central Park. They don't want a concrete jungle. They don't want to have the loss of the Pascarella Fountain. I read all the things online about the sandstone damage. I know about all that. It is still a disgrace to remove that fountain and replace it with a circular slab of concrete. Nobody wants that. Nobody wants the loss of our beloved park. I look at some of this, and I'm in complete shock that I'm standing here before you today, giving this kind of speech, knowing that at least one person agrees with me, maybe more, but you're still going to vote on it. You still wasted all this money. That money could have been put in the public safety building. It could have went in our neighborhoods. How do we save Christmas? How do we save the park? You're going to close off Main Street? You're going to get rid of parking spaces? Take away our greenery? What more can I say to you all to tell you that this is such a badly, poorly run plan that you've wasted four years on with no results and no leadership? Marie mentioned last night you want a Sue Skid to get your $1.6 million back. You said there's possibly taking lawsuit action. Marie, we were in a public meeting, Marie. We were all there, and so was Taylor, and it was recorded, and Odenian has a copy of it. If you do that because of whatever reason, you are still wasting resources and time. I don't know what else to say to you. I'm asking all seven of you to vote no tonight. I'd rather see you give this money back to the government instead of continually wasting it and destroying our business district. I don't know what else I can say to you. Frank, you're shaking your head no. Excuse me. Mayor Frank, you still wasted all this money.
There's no way we're giving it back to the government. It's going to be put into the park one way or the other.
You're destroying the park. Destroying the park. Do you realize that people are not in favor of this? You've dragged this on so long, created so many issues because of your lack of leadership, your inability to even have the simplest thing done. It's been four years. I've been standing up here, meeting after meeting. Remember the Main Street Committee you all appointed? Mine was Taylor. They met once. And the Main Street project affects the Central Park project. You still haven't had the plans on that. So I want you to think about what you're doing. I want you to think about how you've affected this community, how you've wasted $2 million and four years of our time destroying a beloved park, taking out our history, our fountain. What about the Christmas village? All the greenery? At what point does this council just throw up their hands and walk away from it? With four of you lame not coming back next year, a majority of you are determining the course of our future, and you should not be. This should be tabled, let the new council take over in January. Whoever those people are, they can spend that money next year and spend it better than you are. Thank you.
Next, we have Tara, your last name. D begins with a D, the first name. Can't make up the spelling. If you would, sir. Your name and spelling, please.
Davien Tackett, D-A-V-I-E-N.
Your address, sir.
145 Franklin Street.
Yeah, five minutes to speak, sir.
Yes, sir. So I'm Davien from the Sweet Spot. Many of you are my customers. Thank you. I'm some of your customers, and I appreciate what you do. I'm not here as an adversary in any way, and I want to thank you for the very difficult job that you all do. It's a job many people aren't willing to do. So I understand that this park project is going forward. I think that it's irrelevant to think that it won't. What I am asking is a business owner for your help in mitigating the losses that we're going to see during this transition time. So as anybody who has a business, especially in this economy, you'll understand in this neighborhood that there are challenges on the best of days. So what I'm looking at that concerns me is I'm looking at a year's worth of a loss in foot traffic and a year's worth of loss of events, which equals substantial amount of our yearly revenue. I'm entirely confident that we can weather that storm. I'm not equally as confident that some of my neighbors can weather the storm. So I ask that when and if this does move forward, however it is that it does move forward, that we please take some time to consider any things that can be done, consider things that could be done to help make this transition a little bit easier for those involved. And quite frankly, I'm glad I'm not sitting where you are making this decision because it's incredibly contentious, and I promise my chain is in the trunk. I've left it at home, and I won't be making any videos about it. But thank you for your time. I know that you'll blow your conscience.
Thank you very much. And next, we have Dr. Cia with the end.
Your camera's in my hand, right? No, my camera.
If you would, spelling of your name.
Dr. Catherine Anne K, C-A-T-H-E-R-I-N-E, A-N-N-E, K, capital M, lowercase c, capital C, L-O-S-K-E-Y, just like the former mayor.
And your address, please.
241 School Place, Johnstown, PA, 15901. I live downtown.
All right, you have five minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I rise tonight because I think this plan is just awful. I've been going to that park since I was six years old. My mother used to take me down there to buck my great uncle's dry screen. They'd go over to the lost your building, and they'd get me some ice cream. They were easy touches, including the former mayor. And when I looked at the plans for this park, I'm with Mr. Dibo, it's a disaster. The fountain is something that we all like. Clean it up. Don't destroy it. The gazebo, something we all like. Clean it up. Paint it. Don't destroy it. It ain't broke. Don't fix it. And I know you've got a couple million dollars burning all in your pocket. I walked through three very large puddles on my way here, and that's just from Main Street. You want to fix something? There you go. Fix that. And surprisingly, that's all I had to say to them. Please, don't destroy the park that I grew up in. I'm prepared to perform at Pride this year, 21st of June. Hope you come. I got a two-hour slot in front of the Sweet Spot, which I'd like a lot of you to come down and hear me perform. One of the songs I'm going to be doing is "I'm Feeling Like I'm Fixing to Die a Rag." I still have light gray hair up here, so I know you all know it. And come, sing along. I worked Country Joe McDonald. He's still kicking. He's sending new words to it. So I want you all to come down. Come down to the park. See the park the way it is. Leave it alone, please. I beg you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Samantha Schaefer. Samantha, spelling of your name, please, and your address.
S-A-M-A-N-T-H-A, S-A-T-H-F-E-R, 525 Main Street Towers.
Five minutes to speak.
Thank you. We needed the park because it was there for many, many years, when I can remember. There were shades on the grass, and we need to keep it. I agree with D. Bartola that that park was needed. Thank you. And vote for your path.
Thank you. Next, we have Sharon Honkus. Sharon, spelling of your name and your address, please.
Sharon, last name is Honkus, H-O-N-K-U-S. I live at 345 Main Street, Lot Number Two, in downtown Johnstown.
Thank you. You have five minutes to speak.
It seems long, but it's in really big print so that I can see it. My name is Sharon Honkus, as I said. I'm a city resident, property owner, former 25-year business owner, and one of the founding members of the Discover Downtown Johnstown Partnership. This evening, I'm here to speak on behalf of Discover Downtown related to the Central Park plan. Since 2022, the partnership and specifically our president, Melissa Radabonic, was involved in several meetings and tours of Central Park to discuss the Christmas tree and the Christmas village. To our shock and disbelief, at your council workshop on April 9th, it was publicly announced that the Christmas village would not return to Central Park. During the planning and public comment stage, Melissa had several walkthroughs of Central Park with Thaddeus Palowski, consultant to the project, Ethan Imhoff, the former city manager, and former community and economic development director, John Deminski. Melissa also had conversation with Kate Orff, founder of SCAPE. In all of these conversations, it was guaranteed that the Christmas tree and the Christmas village would both return to Central Park post-construction. Discover was engaged with the city management and SCAPE officials as late as May of last year regarding electrical capacity and functional needs of our control boxes inside the park. But then, for 11 months, we heard nothing. It seems like at some point in these 11 months, a unilateral decision was made that the Christmas village would not return to the park, and we were not told. And seven weeks since the April workshop, Discover representatives have had two separate meetings with city manager and the assistant city manager, as well as a meeting with up-street architects and CJL. We appreciate being invited back to the table, and while we appreciate CJL and the city's intent to provide inadequate electrical capacity and accessibility for the village, we must continue to express our disappointment that what was promised for the past two years regarding the Christmas village is not happening. We have the blueprint for the soon-to-be-closed gazebo place, and we understand that because of this closure, the area will be considered a portion of Central Park. But it totally crushes the experience that we created 10 years ago. The coordinated animation of the Christmas village along with the Christmas tree gives families the unique opportunity to stroll through the park, taking in the beauty of these uniquely made houses along with the tree. Two linear rows of houses on one narrow road are going to ruin that feeling. The hundreds of hours of programming that took place over the last 10 years is now worthless. The village doesn't just blink. The animation is in coordination with the Christmas tree. This programming that our volunteers took so many hours to create will not make sense. Standing on the former gazebo place with your back to the tree, looking at a row of houses does not equate to strolling around what was the Christmas village. This volunteer group is left with a decision to toss those hours of programming and start again, or no longer animate the village. If time was money, relocating the Christmas village tosses hundreds of hours of programming and tens of thousands of dollars of what is considered a paid professional job. We are left with the rhetorical question of how did we get here? For the last two years, the village was going back in the park. Last May, the village was going back in. 11 months later, it is not. Discover is an extremely dedicated group of volunteers, as you are all aware. We do not perform any initiative or events because we're paid to do so. We simply do it because we want to make our downtown a better place to live, work, and play.
Sharon, you have 30 seconds to conclude.
This has been our mission since inception in 1998. The Christmas Tree at Central Park Initiative and all of the events that surround it for the last two decades define that mission. As volunteers, we spend a lot of our free time doing this work. As we continue to search for a temporary home this year, we hope you will consider what was told us since 2022 and find a way for the village to return to Central Park in 2026 and beyond. How's that for timing?
Thank you. That concludes our public comments. This time, I will read our resolution, and after our resolution, we will move on to presentations. Resolution of City Council of City of Johnstown, Cambria County, Pennsylvania, approving the Central Park Improvement Design Plan. So I have a motion, please. Do I have a second? Roll call.
I would like a moment of discussion if I may.
And I have a statement I'd like to make. Laurel?
I'm sorry, this is Mr. Pepper. I have something to add. I was just...
Well, the president, they asked to speak.
Well, no, I'm just like, you can call it Laurel. I just want to make sure we got to be present.
Before, yeah, okay. But they're going to vote with that, just sorry. So questions, discussion.
Okay, thank you. So I just, I want to be clear that I have a lot of heartburn about the plan that's in front of me. The plan that's in front of me did not go through any manner of community engagement. It does not reflect the will of the people as I understood it. The will of the people as I understood it was delivered to me in the extensive community engagement process that SCAPE Landscape Architecture did. The other reason I have a lot of heartburn is, as some of these other folks mentioned, we spent a lot of money to get a brand-new park. We paid a lot of money for SCAPE Landscape Architecture to design a park for us, and they did so. They delivered all their documents, and they had a park for us to present, and then we started to make changes to the park. So like many other people, I can't quite figure out how we got there with a large circle in the park, how we have these multiple pathways now. Every argument I've heard, whether it's additional handicap accessibility or something else, I don't find convincing. I don't understand the compelling reason to alter the park beyond minor substitutions. The way we have altered the park has demanded not just additional pavement, but a new photometric study. So all of these additional design steps have been squeezed into the past seven weeks when I first saw a pan drying over top of SCAPE's plan. So I have a lot of concerns about that because SCAPE has obviously distanced themselves from this project, and that's a mistake for all of us. We no longer have the park that we paid for. We no longer have the park that 300 Johnstowners told me that they wanted. So I don't, I couldn't in good conscience vote to move forward with this plan. This does not mean that I am against updating the park, making the park greener, adding trees to the park, having appropriate plantings in the park, having better lighting and better electricity in the park. I am fully in favor of all those things. Those are wonderful things. That's what the people asked me to do, and this is not that. Thank you.
So I have a, I prepared a statement that I don't agree, but before I do, I just want to make sure that I say that I am going to submit this to the State Department afterwards so it will be in its entirety, so we don't mess up any words that I'm about to say. So it is no secret that I have my concerns about this park design. Specifically, I have been vocal about the fact that a new concrete circle with concrete pathways have been added, or originally, a substantial amount of open green space was to be appropriated. I still believe the changes to the original concept are credible. However, I do understand the concerns from others as to why it did change. The way it was described to me was that there were concerns about the exclusion of a pathway through the center of the park that would make it more difficult for citizens generally to get from one side of the park to the other. I believed those people could simply walk around the park to access the other side. I am also concerned that having that circle in the middle of the park to house the Christmas tree for just two months out of the year would leave it underutilized the other 10 months. However, in meetings with CJL Engineering and Upstreet Architects, my concerns have been addressed. If this design passes today, it is vitally important that we ensure the circle is utilized throughout the entire year, not just during Christmas. When I was appointed to this council, I made the residents of our city a very specific promise, and that was that I would never lie to them. In complete transparency, I considered proposing mothballing this project and setting the money that was allocated back to the federal government. If that were to happen, there would be detrimental implications that the city would have to endure. The criticism of this council and our local government would be deafening, and confidence would be projected throughout our community. Spending $1.6 million on a brand-new designs for Central Park and then having absolutely nothing to show for it will be a total and complete embarrassment. Moreover, it would prove very difficult for the city to receive targeted state or federal funding moving forward because we would have proven that we cannot get a project completed with the money that was allocated to us. I am not willing to put our city in that precarious position. The last thing that I would ever want to do is hurt this city or its citizens. Although I have stated from the beginning, agreeing with certain members of this council, past and present, and before I had the honor to represent the people of this city, the money that we received from the American Rescue Plan funds could have been used in so many other areas of need within this city. The city council proceeding made the majority decision to allocate the money to this specific project. I think it is very important to understand the point at which we are at right now. It is either we move forward with the Central Park project, or we give the money back, and it really is that simple. While I and others on this council have concerns with this design, I must say at the end of the day that I am not willing to give up all the good about the Central Park project because of the aspects that I disagree with. We cannot potentially lose a brand-new park, three-phase electricity, seven new water outlets, a brand-new extension on the gazebo park place, a new Walk of Honor, a new irrigation system, and overall, a new park that would be ADA compliant and more inclusive for all to use. Ultimately, this is about doing what is best for the citizens of Johnstown. I believe forfeiting this project when we are so close to beginning the real work would not only be detrimental to the city's future, but would be extremely short-sighted. The reaction to this project is akin to that of the announcement by Discover Downtown Johnstown of the addition of the Christmas tree in the park originally. I was part of the group of people that originally said that the tree was a vast waste of money, and it would do little to benefit the downtown area. As we see today, I and others could not have been more wrong. I see Central Park project in a similar way. It may be difficult to visualize a new park right now, but in the future, I truly believe this new and vastly improved park will be a tremendous asset for the central business district and indeed to the entire city. It is important that we finish what was started. We have a real opportunity to make some good changes to our city. Therefore, I must urge this council and the public to please not be short-sighted and attempt to see the good of what this project will ultimately bring to downtown Johnstown and our surrounding community. Let us always remember that this city and its citizens deserve the very best from us every single day. So please, let us finish what was started. Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on. CJL will be doing their presentation. You go, please.
Counsel, so I am Jen LaRice of WSP. I'm going to give the opening to the rest of the team. So some of you know me, either in my prior life or currently. I was former PennDOT Deputy Secretary for Multimodal, so everything other than highways fell under my jurisdiction. That included recreation, trails, parks, anything that was tied in with that element. So why am I involved? Well, to be honest, your elected officials at the state level, PennDOT and FTA were all concerned with the RACE grant and the ability of the city because it's very complex, and it is not something that a lot of cities and municipalities deal with on a day-to-day basis, the ability to get that across the finish line. So I believe, and I'm ballparking this, so I apologize if I'm not dead on, the RACE grant had been awarded, and I believe about 18 months in, PennDOT, who wanted to support this along with those other entities, did not have additional staff. So we are under retainer to the department. And our mission, as I have worked in Johnstown again in my prior life, was to assist in any way, shape, or form to get that RACE grant across the border. So I know we're talking about the park, but I think this is important to understand, and I know we've had this ongoing conversation. So when I came in, the park was part of the Main Street idea. That is how the RACE grant was put in. FTA came back and said, listen, we understand that the RACE grant was awarded, but no federal transit administration dollars under the RACE grant program can go to the park. So the park had to be separated out, which was not catastrophic because, again, there were ARCA money and I believe ARCAP funds also on the table. So even though there were separate funds for that, they still needed it to be a separate design package. So we are moving forward on the RACE grant, which I know is not the topic tonight, but I think it was important to understand my involvement. So myself and my team, we have been assisting along the way with design reviews, helping make sure things are consistent with the RACE grant, but also because this had been split out, also making sure that there was compatibility and consistency between the two bid packages. Because we did not want to see, again, there's still federal regulations that the city needs to comply with. So we were helping along those methods, too. So again, I think we've heard that there was a prior designer that was originally under contract. CJL was always part of that team, so I want to make that clear. The good news is, well, let's rephrase. The bad news is, I made a ton of notes on this scrap of paper I found in my purse of all the comments from the people in the gallery. The good news is, is that a lot of that is a snippet of the bigger picture. So I'm not saying at the end of the day you will have 100% of the people that love everything that you propose, but I do believe that the team has worked very hard to develop a plan with the park that gets that plan out the door, that provides amazing benefits to the citizens overall, and from a fiscal accountability perspective, comes in at or under the budget that has been set for. So I know, we don't always like to talk about funding, but as I said before City Council, I know that's usually a hot button on your agenda and given week or month. So again, what you are going to see tonight is, yes, there have been refinements from the original plan, and a lot of those were done to ensure a more durable surface or to ensure that the bid comes in within costs. I think that one thing that really needs to be acknowledged is, we are in a very weird time right now at the federal government, and that trickles down to us at the local level. So inflation and scarcity issues on materials are also a concern. The plans were reexamined to look at that. The plans were updated to address over 300 comments that were still outstanding at the, and I'm air quoting, the 100% design submission. So there's been a lot of what I call refinements. There was not a $1.6 million loss of any plans. The plans were essentially taken to that point, and yes, further refined. That is not unique to the situation. It is a glorious work in progress across the board, whether it's a park, whether it's a trail, whether it's a streetscape. Those are normal evolutions, I guess I would say. Those are normal evolutions, I guess I would say. So enough, I guess, of my oversight or two cents. I am going to turn it over to Alyssa, and she's going to walk you through all the different components and what is being proposed, and how this will look, and the upgrades that are being proposed.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa from C J L Engineering. I'm going to present the plans for the new Central Park. Ben, if you could zoom out.
That'd be great.
So we're going to basically just walk you through what we're proposing, kind of step by step. The park's kind of broken down into a couple of different rooms, so between myself and Karen, we're going to walk you through what we're proposing. So I think everybody already knows that the park's going to be a total redo. There's a number of items that we're going to salvage for reuse. The gazebo will be removed, salvaging some of the signage and the cluppah roof from the gazebo and hopefully reusing it some art pieces in the park. The existing border stones around the park are going to be salvaged and reused. Pasquale Fountain is being moved to Sandyvale, where it will be installed on a new concrete base. The cannons currently flanking the Joseph John statue will also be moved to Sandyvale. The Fireman's Bell will be moved to the Fireman's Memorial Park. All other monuments that are in the park currently will stay on the Memorial Walk in New Park. Park Place is going to be closed for pedestrian traffic with removable ballers. And then a number of existing trees are going to be protected and saved to stay in the park. So we'll start off on the Franklin Street side of the park, on the Memorial Walkway. So as I said before, all of the monuments, other than the Fireman's Bell and the Pasquale Fountain are staying. So we have the Jacob Campbell Civil War Statue, the Time Capsule, the Military Service Memorial, and the 28th Military Police Memorial, and the 1977 Flood Memorial, all along the walkway. The Joe John statue is staying in the park's center, pretty close to where it's at now, pushed back a little bit further from Main Street, with a seating wall behind it. New signage is going to be installed on the Memorial Walkway to kind of walk you along each monument. All of the monuments will have lighting and signage associated with each. There's handicap parking going to be installed on Franklin Street, which is going to be located right next to the Memorial Walk to provide accessibility. Benches throughout the Memorial Walkway, landscaped in throughout, and also flat bowls for memorial services. I also want to note that the design team has met with every monument group throughout this process, reviewed the plans, made sure that their monuments were in the correct positioning, the correct orientation, and that they're being provided whatever they need, amenities for each monument as they requested. Jumping over to the other side of the park, on the Park Place side, proposing to install new sidewalks in front of businesses along Gazebo Park. That sidewalk in existing condition, I think everybody is aware, is in pretty terrible shape, and that's a pretty good use of the funds to replace that sidewalk. We're also proposing to put a new asphalt overlay on Park Place to raise that elevation so that it's flush, and then we will put an exposed aggregate resin on top of that for a decorative textured finish, and that will kind of lead into the patio area and kind of make that all feel, kind of make it all feel like it's part of the park. So the end will have removable ballers, so it's still accessible to vehicles for deliveries, emergency access, et cetera. And then the Park Place patio area will have picnic tables, some lounge chairs, some seating, and some greenery. So that's a good spot for people to hang out, eat lunch, enjoy the park, enjoy performances going on, et cetera. The other part of the new Park Place would be where the Christmas village display is proposed to go. So the houses will line Park Place, and then we have all new electrical infrastructure in the ground boxes at each house location to provide their electrical and data connection so that there's no extension cords running for a slip hazard. The next major feature in the park would be the water feature. So that's on the Locust Street side of the park, close to where the new pavilion is. The water feature will have a push button activated to make it interactive for users. There's also some precast stone seating. It's low to the ground and textured, so if it gets wet, it's not a slip hazard. There's also a water feature controller that can be controlled by Wi-Fi, so the city can control that from their phone if they want to turn it off, turn it on, set it on a timer if they want to run it for 15 minutes an hour, Monday through Friday, or if they want to do it. It's also totally customizable. There's LED lights in the fountains, so you can change the colors to fit a theme for the park or whatever you would want to do. I'm going to turn it over to Karen.
Hello, I'm Karen Welsh of Uptown Architects. We're going to start with the pavilion. It's designed to represent our industrial heritage. You all have renderings, I believe, of the packets. The rear of the pavilion is designed as an octagon shape to reflect the traditional gazebo and present that face to the exterior of the park. A metal frieze detail is added on the perimeter for ornamentation. From the park, the interior looks like so many of our industrial buildings, with exposed beams, purlings, and ceiling panels. There will be black steel frame, copper-colored roof, and wood ceiling. LED color-changing lights will provide illumination and color themes. Commercial-grade motorized patio shades with clear vinyl windows can be lowered on all sides except the front, so events can happen all year long and in misty rainy winter weather. The pavilion size is 30 feet deep by 40 feet wide, with a 14-foot-deep by 40-foot rectangular space towards the front and a 16-foot octagonal space behind, suitable for many performances. It is 10 feet high at the perimeter and 16 feet high at the peak facing the park. The paved area is distributed to the center of the pavilion for the best viewing and lots of accessible seating or dancing area. A curved concrete bench wraps under the tree for permanent seating. The design team has spoken with various musicians about pavilion design, and the pavilion proposed, it is installed plush, which allows for easy transport of their equipment and can be used by anyone at other times. The motorized drop-down sides are a huge improvement, as it will allow performances to continue in their equipment to be protected in the event of a pop-up rain shower. Moving to the event lawn, it will be installed with a two-and-a-half-foot grade change, going from the pavilion up to the center of the park to provide a viewing area of the pavilion and give it an amphitheater feel. The event lawn features both lawn space and some hardscape surfacing for easier accessibility for older folks who may have a difficult time getting up the grass to view a performance. The center gathering circle provides additional hardscape area for viewing the pavilion and creates a separate gathering space in the park. Sidewalks provide a connection to each corner of the park to allow for accessibility across the park while avoiding the pavilion or water feature area when a performance is going on. The central gathering space will contain electrical and data connections to support the Christmas tree, which will be the focal point during the Christmas season. Removable planters will be placed in the center during other times of the year with seasonal plantings. The planters are removable to allow for flexible use of the space and potentially additional seasonal displays to advertise other activities or events in the park. Benches surround the central gathering space at the top of the lawn with backless benches facing closest to the pavilion, so they can be used as permanent seating. In terms of landscaping, landscape beds are provided throughout the park and will provide a variety of low-maintenance flowers, shrubs, and trees. All plantings are native, people- and pet-friendly, low maintenance, and provide a variety of colors and textures. Thicker landscaping will discourage people from walking through the beds, especially if paved walks are provided where people want to go. The tree grates will be a porcup rubber mat that are easy to modify for tree growth, easy maintenance, and provide safe walking surfaces. The irrigation system consists of sprinklers in lawn areas with hose-bid connections in planting areas for easy watering and park maintenance. In terms of paving materials, a variety of materials will be used throughout the park for aesthetics and functionality. Park Place will receive a resin-bound aggregate as Alyssa described. The rest of the park servicing is a combination of concrete pavers and standard concrete pavement, which will be detailed with control joints and a groomed, non-slip finish. So I just want to open up to any questions that anybody has.
I have a question. Maybe you know my grandfather's grave. Just have it up.
Any questions?
So one of my questions is, I heard the word refinements a lot, and I'd like to get some clarity on what refinement intention there was behind altering Skate's design for the pavilion.
So I mean, obviously, the biggest thing that we added was the circle in the middle of the park for the Christmas tree and other seasonal displays, and it's going to serve as a kind of a central gathering place. The biggest reason for the additional circle in the middle was basically to connect the corners of the park. Probably, in my opinion, probably the most traveled way across that park is from the corner of Gazebo Main to the post office corner. We felt that was important to maintain. I was actually just downtown on Saturday for a taste and tour, and I think that I walked that exact diagonal probably about eight times throughout the day. So we thought that that was an important aspect that needed to be kept, so you didn't have to walk the way around the park to get to more in the corner. So that was a change to the plan.
Okay, all right. So I asked about the pavilion, but we can talk about this first. So we're adding in an additional pathway for the convenience of people. So we're splitting up this green space, which frankly, people would be disinclined to walk through anyway if there was another clear path through the park, but we're kind of disrupting this memorial walk with some additional pathways for convenience, essentially. We're disrupting the event lawn for convenience of people to walk across the park. So instead of encouraging people to experience the park, we're saying it's better if we can just make the park a superhazard where people can cross.
You don't dig with the...
No? Okay, all right. So I guess I'm trying to understand the design intention of altering this. Who decided that we were going to make this change?
There was a lot of talk with city members about budgetary items and making changes and...
So city staff to save money asked to put this line across the park?
I don't know if city staff asked for that.
Okay.
As someone who owns a business for almost 39 years, the traffic patterns of people in this area and any place is the convenience of the individual, and that's what it's all about. Because people will walk right through your flower beds, right over your trees, kick the plants, and walk past them because they want to get the fastest way from one place to the other, and they don't give a darn what's happening. I know it doesn't appreciate it, but I can tell you from experience that people do what's convenient to them, and this makes it more advantageous for them to follow their path to the concrete rather than walk through a flower bed and destroy what's been planted, and then we have to go back and fix it anyhow, which is what happens to make this all the time.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that we, whoever "we" is who made this design change, is saying that they know better than the 300 people who've contributed to community engagement. Just want to be clear.
Jen, can I ask a question? Jenny, can you tell us some conservative estimates I'm seeing on money we've saved with this plan? I'm saying $800,000 to $1.2 million. Is it in that vicinity?
I believe you are correct, and let's be clear. So there was also some things that got upgraded, right? There were things that were refined that resulted in a reduction in the cost, but there were also some things, again, like gray cutters, right, that were more durable, that allowed the trees to grow so that they wouldn't pop sidewalks, they wouldn't stunt the trees' root. So there were some switches back and forth, but yes, you're definitely within that price range.
So do you think, I'm looking at Main Street and I had nothing to do with it previously, but I think of some people at that time, and we looked at that, we wouldn't have put bricks in with the cross we have, we wouldn't have trees deep-rooted. We would have made a lot of changes electrical that we're now repairing. So I'm in favor of making this the money the best we can for whatever changes are going to help 20 years, not just now, but 20 years down the road.
Yeah, and I think, so this isn't like a yes or no answer all the time, but a lot of refinements were done in looking at not only cost savings, but how is that tied to long-term maintenance that the mayor is referring to? So collectively, the team, whether you're the consultants, or the city manager, or other members of the city, we want the park to look as wonderful as it does on day one, the day you all cut the ribbon, five and 10 years down the road. So I will tell you in my experience, sometimes that doesn't happen because there aren't kind of lessons learned, right, or that that thought process isn't fully vetted out. So I, the discussions that I have been privy to and involved in, I think were incredibly productive. Some things, again, were upgraded, which will help with the long-term maintenance, the water situation and how that works, and infiltration. And yes, there were some refinements to the design, but I think, I will tell you, the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. So I agree with the councilmen in that my experience has been, if you don't put a sidewalk in now, people will cut through there and you'll have what we refer to as goat paths. So we can agree to disagree on that, but I do think there was a lot of discussion, we heard from folks as part of the outreach, how important the Christmas tree was. So this provides a spot for the tree, and then the discussion was also held, and I don't know if this was a reflection of you, councilman, or others, but like, hey, what about the other 10 months of the year? And there was a lot of, it was actually a fun discussion, like creative discussions, like, well, there could be a giant blow-up pumpkin, and it could be like trick-or-treat night in the park. There was a whole list of ideas that people rattled off, you know, that were like, hey, that's not a bad idea, and, you know, things can evolve and new traditions can begin. So again, there were, there's definitely an overall net, what we believe will be a cost savings. Now, the reality is, until the project is bid and those come in, you know, we don't know, but compared to the original plan with, and now with the refinements, yes, there is a projected savings of the ballpark, the range that you mentioned. So I'd like to go back to the pavilion. The pavilion. So we were saying again, we made changes to Skate's original design, that it was a refinement. Can we describe how this new design for the pavilion is a refinement on Skate's design?
Karen, sure. It's not a refinement, it's a completely new pavilion.
Okay, okay. So it's a drastic change then?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay. Why do you think we needed a drastic change to the pavilion and Skate's design?
Because the one that was there was a generic rectangle that had no representation of the city.
Okay, all right. And you said you consulted with performers. Could you tell me who you consulted with? Because I see at least two in the room, and at least one of them shaking their heads that what you described as refinements were actually going to be detrimental to their ability to perform. Who did you consult with?
I did, there were other people in our team that talked to them
Okay.
about the performance, the level of the grade being flush, being desirable for equipment moving. And this is a fairly typical shape of a pavilion, so I think there is not much in question. There's many, many pavilions of this shape that are musical performance areas.
Okay, well, you described the other one as generic, so I thought it would be more typical, but okay. All right, so, all right, so we said that about the pavilion, and then we were talking about adding additional space for handicapped accessibility, when in fact, I want to just point out, there is about 40 feet of space in between the lip of the pavilion and where the lawn starts without needing this new wide funnel pathway. Is that accurate? It's about 40 feet?
It's probably somewhere between 30 and 40, yes.
Yeah, okay, great, okay.
Karen, the pavilion, we talked about this before. What Skate had in their drawing was... was a placeholder. It was something they just plucked off the internet and just stuck it in there. That was not a design that they actually worked on and studied on. It was just a placeholder. It was because it was a placeholder, it was because we were 75% in the design phase, and had we gotten to the 100% in the design phase, we would have had a designed pavilion other than a placeholder that was just coming up the internet.
That appears to be correct. I'm 100% sure. We were delivered to 100% of the design. It was not...
How much larger is this pavilion to put it out with what we have now?
I'm sorry.
How much larger, how much area?
It's about 10 feet longer, so it went from 30 feet to 40 feet, and it's about, I'm, this is from memory, it's a smaller dimension than that, deeper.
Deeper?
Five or eight feet deeper and about 10 feet wider. It's about 20 by 30, and this is 30 by 40. Jenny, did we receive 100% design?
So the prior consultant will tell you they submitted 100% design plans, and that is an accurate statement. Were they complete? No. We had over 300 comments that they have not addressed, and as I told city council previously, if you would have put those plans out, you would have come back with RF buys and increased the costs that I can't even fathom.
What's an RF buy?
A request for information. So contractors, when they bid on a set of plans, they will, they will bid based on what they say, and if the plans are incomplete, then they low-bid it, and then they will come in for a work order amendment, request for additional information, and they'll say, well, that's not what was in the plan, you were missing this, and it increased costs during construction. So again, I believe I conveyed my concern to council. You can feel free to submit those plans and bid them out, but it will cost you exponentially more money in the long term, and it is a very high-risk maneuver.
Changing gears here a little bit, I just want to take a moment and thank Discover Downtown. I was on the initial group, but I'm not taking any credit for that. Melissa, Sharon, Doug, all back there, but we had our issues when they, where were we going to get $75,000, $80,000 for a tree? When are you going to do it, a tree? It's not going to do anything. You said that, councilman, et cetera. Where are we going to put it? We're going to put it in the fountain? Get out of here. It's not going to go into the fountain. How are we going to do that? The point I'm trying to make is we've been flexible, the city and Discover Downtown, over the years, and they've done a fantastic job. We want to keep that tree downtown. This is going to be an inconvenience for a year, absolutely. The agency I work with has one of those houses, there's 40 other ones of them, but I think, I don't think we need to work together. We don't want to lose this. This is a one-year bid inconvenience, and also it's a business, but we've got to work together, just like we did when we started with that tree in the park. That's just my comment, and again, a big thank you to Discover Downtown. I know how much work they've done to make this happen. This just didn't happen like that.
So getting back, Jenny, getting back to the cost again, when this project started back three years ago, or whatever, my main concern always was, and I said this to Ethan Nimmo, John Donansky, you're bidding this, you're looking at this project with a budget that you said we came up to right at the line on budget. How can you possibly say we're going to be on budget in three years? Okay, this was during COVID, we had supply chain issues, we didn't know what prevailing wage was going to be. If we have to do prevailing wage, we don't know what that was going to be. And they said, don't worry, we'll be fine, we're coming in on, we'll be fine with budget. Because they said they factored in a percentage as a cost overrun, and I said, how could you do a cost overrun if you don't even know what you're looking at? So again, and now we're at a point where we have tariffs, okay, and tariffs affect just about everything. So the savings that the city did, I said this previously on the Zoom call, the savings that the city has made on the $900,000 stone wall, plus other things, is offsetting and banking some funds to try and take care of the cost when we finally get the bid ready that is 100% biddable with accurate numbers and not the numbers that we had with the previous one. I just want to make that clear. You're saying we had an agreement, so we're on the same page.
Yeah. Unless the city is sitting on a bucket of money to cover overruns, which last time I checked, you guys might be the only one that are in that situation. Because it's much easier to be in that situation than have all your bids come in over what you estimated, and then you have to go and cut something in order to keep the project moving forward, and that's never, that's never a good place for any of you to be. What goes and what stays?
The cuts, if there were cuts that we would look at that would have to be made, wouldn't be done for free. There would be different designs that we would have built for design. So we're paying money to save money that we're not really saving.
Yeah, it isn't just, oh, we just won't have them obstruct that. You have to do redesigns as a result of it.
Yes.
So the circle refinement, that we're calling it, I've heard a couple people say, oh, that's where Discover wanted the Christmas tree to go, and I keep seeing Discover shaving their head. So I just want to be, did Discover direct you to make a spot for the Christmas tree in the center?
No.
No. So that was another choice where this collective of staff and CJL and Upstreet decided that that was what we missed.
Yeah, once we, once we added the sidewalks cutting through the corners to connect, it kind of just naturally made a nice gathering area, and we were like, it's also a great spot to move the tree instead of having it tucked back in the corner by the pavilion. It seems like a great place to just make this a little bit bigger, the tree can stay in the middle of the park and still be the centerpiece.
It's always been a little, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so instead of putting it basically by the pavilion, which is where the SCAPE design had it, we want to put it in the center. And I've heard a lot of people also say the word "view shed," and if I'm looking at this, it's not a topographic plan, but I think there's still a pretty good slope in the park looking toward the pavilion, so there would be some slope looking at the tree if we were still beside the pavilion. But right now, we've kind of got this concrete pad, which I say is pretty big because it is, but if we have a volume of people there, are they going to be trying to stand in the flower bed, I wonder, to look at the tree if we move it there? I don't know, I feel like we had a pretty good design where we had it next to the pavilion.
There's still an eight or 10-foot sidewalk surrounding the tree, which is kind of how it is now. It's going to be at the high point of the park, so I can see it from anywhere in the park.
Okay, okay, so instead of kind of looking at it maybe on a grade, you're looking up at the tree, which is already pretty tall. All right, yeah, the only other thing I wanted to say to make quick, we keep talking about cost savings, and we do have the emails that say SCAPE was willing to save us $850,000 on the blue rock. I know thankfully, we're replacing some of the blue rock with something else. SCAPE, I think, was willing to reduce the volume of rock to save us that much money, but we're replacing it with new rock, which at least preserves sort of most of the rooms of the park, except we're really kind of losing our lawn. That's what I had. Thank you.
Call for a question, please. Rebecca.
I have another comment, I have two before I go to do that. I just, there's been comments about how the money's been spent and how we've been done, but I want to refer to what Jenny was mentioning too. We worked very hard with Senator Casey herself to get the RACE grant. That was, $24.5 million came from the city, and that was the third highest across the United States. We've also gotten $30 million from the ARPA fund, so over this past few years, we were able to get $54.5 million. And I'm not going to pretend that $6 to $8 million isn't a lot of money, and it's a lot of money for a park, but 85% of that funds went into something else to help our city. So when I'm talking, we've spent $8 million, again, that's not a drop in the bucket, but again, we've spent $46.5 million on other projects throughout the city that are either pending or completed. So I've got to commend council and say, look, we're trying to split this money up as best we could, you know, some are going for home repair, sewage, businesses, nonprofits, Point Stadium, Main Street Project, et cetera. So this council has tried to do its best to spread those monies out and help many across and throughout the city.
And may I just, to further elaborate on the RACE grant, most entities that applied for that had to produce a 30% global match. Your federally elected officials I know also had support at the state level, especially from the senator, and that federal RACE grant has a 0% global match, a $0. So that really does say something. So it's, it is a good thing. I just wanted to further emphasize that, and that does not happen with any other RACE grant recipient. I'm not going to say it's a zero gain, but it is a very rare thing, so that really is a reflection on our state elected officials, their ability to bring that down.
That's probably a one-time in a Johnstown lifetime, that's why we're taking the time to look at all the projects we're doing.
Okay. All for a question, please.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Britt?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Smol?
Yes.
It's your vote.
Yeah.
The vote is...
It's mine.
All righty. Old business and new business. If not public comment, this time I think we have Mr. DeBaratola signed up. Your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak, sir.
John DeBaratola, D-E-B-A-R-T-O-L-A, 1197 Pepper Street. Laura, thank you for questioning. Of all of you at this council, I'm going to tell you my comment on what I just saw. One word, I heard one word from the Reverend Deputy Mayor Sillian King, and that was a yes vote. You didn't offer us your comment, your opinion, your criticism, your praise, totally silent. You and I are going up to get together in November. If you can't comment at this meeting and you can't tell people what you think, we're going to have a problem. You need to start talking and some people will let you think. And as for you, Mayor Frank, I will get back on topic. I'm sorry. A couple months ago, I filed a write-to-no request with you all. I wanted records on ARPA funding, and you know what I discovered? The city had a record, Plumb and Jahop, mismanaged and misappropriated $250,000, according to your records. You had to get back $115,000. The silent city council, you never told anybody. I had to put the records on Facebook, shame you all, and now I'm standing in front of you saying, if you can't manage our money properly, how are you going to manage the Central Park money? Laura's right, you did pay $1.6 million, and you wasted it. No disrespect to CJL, you can claim you utilized them, whatever. I heard from Marie last night, $80,000 for your plans. That money was wasted, it's lost, the plans aren't being used, it's a total adjunct disgrace. And you're all sitting here making excuses, playing politics. The people of this community do not want this done. You're not listening. And how much more mismanagement has there been in the city? How many more projects have you failed to look through because of sheer lack of leadership and utter, utter incompetence? It's shocking to me. I heard from Discover over there, their tree has no place to go for Christmas 2025. Our residents do not want this project to move forward. You're not listening. What will it take? And what will it take to break your silence so we get more than a one-word answer? You couldn't even do an interview with Brooke over there in the corner. They made excuses, and you're making excuses today. So I pray for you. I pray that you find your voice, much like I did, and you start telling us what you think and stop hiding. Please, please wake up. It shouldn't take someone like me showing up as the challenger saying, look at what you're doing with our money if you're wasting it. You have a room full of people, most of them don't agree with you, except for the people getting paid, and that's always the story of Johnstown, isn't it? Who gets the handback? Who gets the money?
You have 30 seconds to speak, sir.
So thank you for your time and listening, even if you didn't hear me. I'll pray for Johnstown.
Thank you, Mr. DeBaratola. But I would commend, as the mayor, I will say, I'm very proud of our leadership in the city, past, present, and future. We accomplished many things, and one of the biggest ones came about Act 47 after 30 years being there, many other accomplishments with sewage, et cetera, et cetera. So at this point in time, I would just like to commend my fellow council members on John DeBaratola. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your opportunity to speak, since you planned a building on my grandfather's grave, so...
I'm sorry, but I did not sign up to speak on this.
And they take 30 seconds. Your building on my grandfather's grave, Hugh Jackson, so do I.
So listener...
I have taken important, that's what I'll do. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, the finished public comment this time, meeting is over.
Well, there you have it, Johnstown. Let me know what you think in the comments.
Speaking here with Discover Johnstown, can you tell me how you feel about today's meeting?
Sure. The only thing that Discover Downtown is disappointed about is that the Christmas Village, the way we know it right now, will no longer go back into the Central Park. It's going to be placed on Gazebo Place, which will be enclosed to vehicular traffic going forward, which really destroys the concept of strolling through the Christmas Village. That's not what's been promised to us for the past two years. We really wish that the houses would go back into the park with the new construction.
Thank you.